And we're on, Rich.
Okay, let's see. First of all, can I ask everyone to mute your microphone, please? So we don't have any interference. Today is Tuesday, October 13th, 2020. It's the virtual meeting for the planning board. On our agenda, the first item at 7:30 is a special permit with site plan approval. Public hearing continued for 808 Main Street. This was asked to be continued without discussion per applicant's request. So the next thing on our agenda.
Nicole has to read the public hearing notice and then you have to make a motion to continue to November 10.
Okay, I'm just trying to make the meeting go faster, so please get going.
I know.
Go ahead, Nicole.
Town and Millis Office of the Planning Board Notice of Public Hearing. In accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 11, the planning board will hold a remote public hearing on Tuesday, October 13th, 2020, at 7:30 PM via Zoom platform. The agenda with login information will be posted on the planning board's website 48 hours prior to the public hearing. McDonald's Real Estate Company, 110 North Carpenter Street, Chicago, Illinois, is requesting a special permit under Section 13, Special Permit Conditions, Paragraph C, Site Plan Review of Zoning Bylaws of the Town and Millis in Section 12-Q, Section 5, Use Regulations to Raise and Rebuild the Existing McDonald's Restaurant Located at 808 Main Street, Millis, Mass., Assessors Map 24, Parcel 3. A copy of the application and site plan is on file with the offices of Town Clerk and the planning board's webpage. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and place designated. Richard Nichols, Chair.
Thank you, Nicole. So now, being 7:35.
You have to make a motion.
You have to make a motion to close it.
To continue.
To continue, oh, sorry.
Excuse me, continue.
All right, I make a motion to continue the, uh, the public hearing.
Second.
All right, motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Okay, next. Special permit for, with site approval, public hearing continued. 376 Orchard Street, Sparhawk Academy. This also is to be continued without discussion per applicant's request. Nicole?
Town and Millis Office of the Planning Board Notice of Public Hearing. In accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 11, the planning board will hold a remote public hearing on Tuesday, October 13th, 2020, at 7:35 PM via Zoom platform. The agenda with login information will be posted on the planning board's webpage 48 hours prior to the public hearing. The Millbrook School Foundation, Inc., 376 Orchard Street, Millis, Mass., is requesting a special permit, application for site plan approval to construct a school building along with driveway parking, stormwater systems, et cetera, at 376 Orchard Street, Sparhawk Academy, Millis, Mass., Assessors Map 9, Parcel 1. Copy of the application and site plan is on file with the, in the office of the Town Clerk and on the planning board's webpage. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and place designated. Richard Nichols, Chair.
All right, I make a motion that we continue the public hearing.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just to clarify, it's continued to Tuesday, November 10th, at 7:35 PM?
Great. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is the Memorial Fields Improvement Project Update from Jim McKay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Welcome back, everybody.
Hey, Jim.
So, Mr. Chair, um, back in January 14th, uh, the planning board approved $25,000 for the Fields project. And we're finally at the place where we're going to move forward with that project. I think in your packet, you received the three bids for the fences and the Fields project. The Select Board at their meeting last week approved it. I also updated the CPC Committee. You know, they're, um, coming up the $75,000 and the planning board has given $25,000. So the award's going to go to Fences by Stephen Panic in the amount of $61,358.50. And, um, Mr. Chair, you probably remember him. He did the fences at the tennis court, pickleball courts. It's the same contractor. So I believe that, you know, myself and Mr. Rand, who is actually going to be the overseer of the project, he'll be the construction supervisor and I'll assist him with, um, you know, paying the bills with Camille. So we think he's, you know, we feel that with the work he did there, you know, he's going to do a good job. The second bid that the Selectman signed is with Diamond Athletic Turf, Inc. at, for $38,200. That's where most of these funds, the $25,000 will go towards, is the renovation of the three soft, uh, two softball fields and the, um, the AAA field. Did we lose something? No.
No, I think Tom's trying to share something.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so, um, that, that work is going to start next week on the Sisto II field. They're going to get the infield in with the grass. And again, I think this, again, I think Diamond Athletic Turf, Inc., they did the Major League Field over at the high school project, which I think that, that came out very nice. So both these projects, we hope to have done. The fencing and everything installed. Under the planning board, it was issued that these funds should be spent by one year of January, January 14th, 2020.
Well, I imagine if, if they needed an extension, we'd gladly.
Yes, I get that.
So.
I get that. But.
No, great, thank you for doing that.
Give everybody an update on what's going on. And, um, I think everybody will start to see the project move forward. You know, hopefully, you know, the fences will be done this year, weather permitting.
Great, no, thank you for doing all that work, Jim. All right, great. So next, uh, next, um, item on the agenda is Form A Application Approval Not Required Plan from Tom Roach. And, uh, let's see, that's just a, we don't have to read that. Is that a?
That's not a public hearing, nope, just a discussion.
So, all right, so, uh, Tom, are you going to go ahead and present that, or?
Sure, basically, um, it's just a transfer of a piece of property from, in a butter. There's a right of way, if you have the plan there, you have the plan?
Hold on.
Anyhow, okay, so there's a right of way of 20 feet roughly going from Forest Road to the back of, I think it's Clues Road. But anyhow, long story short, Pam Moore has been trying to put an addition on her house. And it's been quite some time, but, um, in a nutshell, she needs, she needed to pick up an extra 180 square feet to have 40,000 square foot, um, so that she could put in a four-bedroom septic system. And so she approached the neighbor and they worked something out. And that's what that little parcel is for, just so that she can get the 40,000 square feet.
Okay, well, that sounds like it makes sense. Does anyone on the board have anything to say about that? Okay, um, so I would make a motion that we approve the.
Actually, excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Riley.
Um, on the, Mr. Roach, in the property that is selling that parcel B, that's, that's not reducing the frontage of the seller's property to within their frontage?
It's not reducing any frontage at all, no, it's at the back of the, uh, at the back of the easement, if you will, in the rear.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
That's it.
No, that's good, sorry about that, no worries, I, um, just getting rolling. I make a motion that we approve the A and R, um, request for 25 Forest Road. Okay, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great, all set, good luck.
Thank you.
All right, um, now that is, uh, the next item on the agenda is, agenda is Regency at Glen Allen, Phase 2 Bond Estiment. Ted Merchant from Toll Brothers is going to walk through the security bond.
I don't know if Ted is going to be presenting or not. Melissa presented a letter from Beta approving it. So if you want to just kind of sum up her letter for the record and you can vote on approving that final amount on Melissa's chart.
Okay, that sounds fine, all right. Let's see here, um, I'll tell you what, I'm going to actually, Nicole, I will read it, just so you don't have to read this one. So this is from Beta, this is the engineer for the town. And so it says, Dear Members of the Board, at the applicant's request, Beta has prepared a bond estimate for the road and infrastructure work remaining in Phase 2 of the Regency at Glen Allen project. The estimate is based on the plans entitled Site Development Plans for Regency at Glen Allen, 85 Sheets by Bowler Engineer, with the latest revision date of December 19th, 2018. The applicant has substantially completed the installation of drain sewer water infrastructure along with stormwater basins currently one foot above final grade. Remaining work includes loam and seed along roadways, cleaning and finalizing drainage basins after site stabilization, gravel roadway base and paving, curving and sidewalks, street signs, lighting and landscaping, and as-built survey. That's one long sentence. Currently, drain and sewer structure covers have not been installed in Road E and F, so these items remain in the bond estimate. Beta recommends that the bond should be set at $1,088,000 for Phase 2 construction as detailed in the attached worksheet. The bond estimate includes a 20% contingency. So, um, I looked at this and would obviously recommend what our engineer says. So I make a motion that we, um, set the bond at $1,088,000 for Phase 2.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, great, thank you very much. Okay. Next on the agenda is Dover Road Residence Assisted Living Facility, Jim Barbison, Barbary Homes. Informal discussion regarding refined architectural plans. And I don't know if I see Jim here.
Um, I don't know if Jim's on, but I'm Mike Dugan with Anthology. We met previously, we're the contract purchaser that's taking it over.
Okay.
I've got TAT, the architect who you know, they're on the line as well. So we're, we're prepared to present. Uh, I think Jim would only maybe offer just a quick intro again, but, um, so we're.
He's not here, so you're on.
Okay. So, um, I think we met last, uh, last year in the fall, as you might recall. At the time, it was more of an introduction to here's who we are, we will be taking over the project. Obviously, there's been, you know, a, a minor global disruption in between then and now, but we are ramping up our effort again to complete the drawings. And when we met last, I think we described to the group the things that we'd like to do. Obviously, the project's approved, but, you know, our focus was taking the interior of the building and optimizing it for our operating team, you know, getting our units in, getting the amenities we like. And so since we've last met, we've done that and refined the plans to the point where we feel very confident in, in them and our operating team is very excited about it. So really, today, what we wanted to do is just present that version of those plans to you. They are slightly modified from what was approved, but, you know, the footprint got a little smaller. The unit count's the same, parking count's the same, exterior architecture largely the same. So wanted to just update the group here, uh, make sure there was any, you know, see if there's any questions or comments we could answer. And then really frankly, just proceed forward and produce the construction drawings with the goal of getting in for permit really by the end of the year, is sort of our.
Okay, that's, so with that, that's fine. So obviously, um, we'd be seeing them for the first time tonight. So, you know, we're willing to take a look at them tonight. What I would say is that, you know, we would want to, I, we look at the stuff. I actually look at everything. So, uh, we'd like to make sure that we have the opportunity to walk through it. Interior stuff, we don't really care about, we just want to make sure that the facade is, you know, like you said, if it's significantly the same, I don't think there'll be an issue. And one, one question that we did have from the neighbors is you would talk about re-engaging. The site has looked like a war zone for three years. So there is some concern from the neighbors of when it's actually going to start to be cleaned up and not look like it has for quite a while.
Sure, yeah, no, we're, we're, that's why we're here, to show the plans and answer any questions. And in terms of timeline, uh, like I said, you know, again, all things being equal, we'd like to get the plans in at the tail end of the year and, and begin in, you know, our phase of construction beyond the earthwork in, you know, late Q3 of next year. That's sort of our, our projected timing at the moment. So that would be, you'd basically follow up next year is what you're anticipating to start? I'm sorry, Q1, so March, March, April.
Okay.
Nope, that's fine. So Anthony, who's on from TAT, has the plans of, I think you can see the screen. I'll turn it over to him to kind of walk through where we were and where we are today and, and show you the elevations and, and things as they said today.
Hi, evening, folks, my name's Anthony Viverito. I'm the architectural representative for the architectural team. We were the original permitting architect for the project with Barbary Homes and now subsequently working with CA Ventures and Barbary Homes to, uh, to finish this, uh, this piece of the revisions to the building up. So what you have in front of you here is a architectural site plan. If you've been to the site, you know that a lot of the earthwork has been done, including the, the ring road here. The buildings that are shown around the ring road are townhouses. There are 14 of them, two in each cluster. Those have not changed their position from the original permitted design and they remain the same. This graphic has a red outline and the red outline shows what was permitted originally. And then underneath it here, you can see what we are proposing. And so we've actually cut out quite a bit of square footage out of the building based on CA Ventures, their own program and pro forma. So, um, we're still working within the boundaries of the ring road. As Mike mentioned, we are providing the same amount of parking and the same number of units. The space that's left over in this graphic here will be outdoor amenity space for the residents. I'll take you through the floor plans here. Again, the first floor plan, uh, the configuration of the building is largely unchanged. This right side of the plan is a, is the memory care wing of the building. The center core is the amenity space for the assisted living folks. And this L-shaped wing is the assisted living neighborhood. On the second floor, we have a similar setup, the L shape here, starting on the left side of the plan is the assisted living, um, we have some common area, sorry, we have some, uh, this is the second floor. We have some, uh, common area along this node of the wing and then the, um, the donut shape for the assisted living. And the elevations have kept the same, uh, we can distribute these PDFs, of course, but we maintain the same building height that was approved and the same character, the, the sort of New England vernacular you see here on these various elevations. So that's really, you know, a, a sort of very quick, high level. This is what we've been working on over the last three, four months. That's a, that's about as, uh, uh, the best summary I can give you right now. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Yeah, could, do you have any exterior elevations of that?
Yep. So here are the exterior elevations. This, it's difficult to, I realize, reading the plans, you know, the elevation's quite long here, but this is the, working left to right on the, uh, on the elevations, you have this, the essential language that we had before, there's a port cochere, there are gabled elements and then of course all the, the resident windows.
So it looks pretty much substantially the same as it did before, that's what I remember it to look like.
Yes, exactly, yep. The goal here was just to, I think, really just put the building on a bit of a diet, if you will. We've cut out a lot of square footage, uh, in this central core. I think it's easier to see in this graphic, you can kind of see where the red is, that was what was permitted and we've actually made the building smaller. And, you know, giving, the nice part about that, you know, the benefit of that clearly is that there's more, there'll be more outdoor space for the residents, which, you know, for a building like this and during the pandemic, uh, there's some, there's real value in, in that, not just making the building smaller.
And then one other question is, um, so you, obviously, you have a generator there. That location hadn't changed, that stayed the same?
Yeah, all the core services, um, uh, remain the same, the trash location. There was a maintenance building, but the standby generator remains the same on the site. A lot of the, uh, original work that was done to the site, utilities were stubbed into locations that we've maintained. Our mechanical electrical room is in this node here where I've got the hand. And so we've kept all of those locations the same, exactly the same.
And one other question is, um, so your AC units, are you going to put those up on the roof, um, just for noise?
Yes. Yeah, so one, one, um, sort of change in, um, working with the different ownership parties here is that CA Ventures likes to use a PTAC unit for the units. This is a through-wall heating and cooling unit. And so there's no, there's no split system, per se, there's no condenser unit. So you're actually, the original design was for a heat pump system where you would have individual condensers on the roof. We actually have less mechanical equipment on the roof. Really will be, uh, the mechanical equipment that will be provided will be for the common area spaces and the make, quarter makeup error only.
Okay, the only reason we ask that is for noise. If you put a, if you decided to put a chiller or something big, we worry about that for the neighbors, but that seems like that's not going to be an issue, so.
Yeah, the chiller, actually, um, the original design anticipated having a chiller, a roof-mounted chiller. And, uh, in this current version with our, with CA Ventures, we're able to get rid of that entirely.
Okay. All right, good, well, it sounds like, um, it sounds like you're making some progress. Any in the, uh, anyone on the board have any questions? Okay, um, oh, George, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, what is the actual height of the building? Total height?
The 35, I think.
Thirty, 38 feet and 35 foot maxed, as measured to the midpoint of the highest peak.
Okay, isn't our, isn't our max height 35 feet, Rich?
Uh, it is, but I don't know if this is a different type of, typically it's 35, but I don't know if it, they're in a different designation.
The, the building heights have not changed since the approval.
Okay.
And my recollection, um, those many years ago was that maximum height was measured not to the top of the highest roof structure, but to the midpoint of the highest roof structure.
Well, if it's a building code issue, I'm sure Michael catch that, so that's, that's fine.
Okay, where is the ambulance entrance? Can you go back to that?
Sure.
Section there?
Yep. Initially, we, uh, the client had envisioned a, the prior client, Barbary Homes, had envisioned an ambulance entrance through the back. And so we have a, a ring road where an ambulance actually, if you want to take folks out of the memory care section of the building, you're able to access through this pair of double doors, a large, um, uh, area for emergency vehicles. Generally speaking, in our experience with assisted living, most emergency vehicle access occurs at the front door. Folks come in the front door, there's a reception area and, uh, that, that is for, for having controlled access in and out of the building at 24 hours a day. So you have these, you, you still actually have two, two areas, front and in the rear.
Okay, it, um, when you were closer on the screen, there's something, a greenhouse there. So is that whole area near the greenhouse, is that all going to be open space, so to speak?
Yes, it will be, there's, um, we do have landscape plans for this that we're working on currently. This will all, this will be an outdoor amenity area for the residents. It will include, um, you have the greenhouse here, there's usually gardening or a bocce court. There are other outdoor patio amenity spaces, barbecue, uh, so on and so forth.
Okay, all right. It's been a long time since we've seen these, so it's, it's nice to see them again.
Yeah, and one more question on that, speaking of landscaping in the front, you had the berm and there was supposed to be specific plantings in the front there?
Yep, so the, the approved landscaping design will not be altered. The berm is, uh, still going to be constructed. The plant, the trees and shrubs that were required as part of the approval will still be, uh, planted or still. We don't have a landscape plan for you tonight, but, uh, they will be provided per those approved documents. And, you know, really, the biggest change is this area in the back where the building is smaller and you have more outdoor space internal to the building. The rest of the plantings and the walking paths all still remain for the.
No, that's good, I mean, we have to ask the question. I mean, that, it looks like we understand what you're doing, is reducing the scale, that's fine. We just, if I don't ask the question, then we're not doing our job, so.
Very good.
One, one more question, Rich?
Yeah.
There was something, there was a, way back when Williamson and Carter talked about putting a sign on that entrance. I'm not sure how we ever ended up with that, because this has been so long, it's been two years now. And the, and the sign was going to be somewhere right off of Dover Road coming into the entrance. Did that ever get resolved?
I think that went, that went to the, uh, that went to the Select Board, because that was beyond our purview.
Okay.
And I think it, when they had approached them, I don't know where that ended up coming to fruition on.
I can double check with Jim, but about, my recollection was there was an agreement executed that allowed that with a few conditions, that would need to be met in order to use the sign.
That's right, but that would be the Select Board.
Okay, yeah, that, I remember that now, it's, it's been so damn long since we've looked at this, so.
Okay. All right, well, great, everything, I mean, it looks like you're. Oh, go ahead, sorry, Alan, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, uh, can you just tell me where the trash collection is?
Trash collection occurs back here. In this area, it, it, it's still, um, it's still per the original site plan approval. Basically, all the service components of the building are clustered in this area here, including the standby generator, the maintenance shed and the trash. And, uh, I think there's a transformer here as well.
We had hours set on that too, Alan, so we had the hours, they, they control the trash collection. So we had the hours set that they're only supposed to collect it at a certain time and.
Good, okay.
If, if we were really good, we actually had the cycling of the generator, so it happened like at 11 o'clock in the, in the day. I, I don't remember if we were that clever, but a lot of the times we'll put that restriction in too.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, anyone else on the board? All right, well, I appreciate you guys bringing this forward. We're eagerly looking forwards to getting this thing underway. And, uh, and like I said, we appreciate you guys keeping it, uh, you know, to the, you know, close to the original plan.
Uh, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Time and, so there, just to verify that, our next step, like I mentioned, that the onset is to complete the drawings and, and have them, you know, re-reviewed permitting-wise. Obviously, based on this, there's no, no concern with that, correct?
With us, no, well, I mean, this, basically, you did this, you know, this is, uh, you're through the planning board, you'll have to go through the, um, you'll have to go through the, um, the building commissioner.
Understood.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, go ahead.
I was just checking the zoning regulations and the permanent height is 35 feet. There's nothing in here that's distinguishing half a point of peaks or anything to that effect. So I would like to see if we can verify with, um, the building inspector that if there is a point here that is 38 feet height, that we can have this. we can have this addressed before the applicant gets too far into the, his, the drawings. I'd like to, I don't want to wait until the next meeting to address that.
Well, we're, we're done. So basically what it is, is, which is a good point, they can, they should bring it up to the building commissioner, because we've already passed this. This is an informal discussion, so.
No, I understand that, but if, if on the, if they're redoing those prints, I just,
Yeah.
I don't want there to be an issue going along once it's building and I'd like to see that. Because I don't recall us granting, I know there was a long discussion about height, especially with this buyer that they had, so.
But they can do things on the, on the building, they can do something called an average grade. So they actually can take higher and lower points, so they do an average grade. I'm not sure if that's how they did it. Thirty-five feet is the general, you know, Massachusetts, but like I said, this is on the, on the developer. They would need to go with the building commissioner and check that. Mike will not approve it if it doesn't meet code. But it's a good point to bring up. No, it's a good point to bring up.
We, and we'll, we'll take a look again, just to double check, okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
Nicole's doing that on, on your behalf, so.
Well, we appreciate that. Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you all. All right, great, thanks again. Okay, so, now we have a Form A application, approval not required from Dan American, Eight Frontier Lane and Three Fifty-One Orchard Street, division of two pieces of land into three, three lots.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Hi, Dan.
So, quick note on that last hearing you had, Nicole, if you look at the definition of height in the zoning bylaw, that's where it talks about average grades and the average of the highest roof structure. It's in the definition sections under height.
No, but it is, that was a good question.
Thanks, Dan.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm gonna share my screen here and show you guys the plan. Okay, this is an A and R plan at the intersection of Frontier Lane and Orchard Street. This is a, a combination of two pieces of land, Three Fifty-One Orchard Street, which is this long skinny parcel here. This is Ann Rich's house. And then Lot Eight Frontier Lane, which is this kind of long weirdly shaped lot in South End Farm. So the owner of Lot Eight entered into an agreement and has acquired the property at Three Fifty-One Orchard Street. So the proposal here is to take the, the two pieces of land and split it into three lots. So where there were one to two, now there will be three. Lot Eight D contains the existing home at Three Fifty-One Orchard. Lot Eight F will basically be the same as the existing Lot Eight in South End Farm, and then Lot Eight E in the middle here is one additional new lot. When the RT zone, everyone has at least two hundred feet of frontage and sixty thousand square feet of lot area, so everybody, each of the lots in question meet the zoning requirements.
Okay, any discussion from the group? All right, I make a motion that we approve the A and R plan for Eight Frontier Lane and Three Fifty-One Orchard Street to divide, to create three lots.
Second.
All right, the motion's been made in second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, great, approved.
Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you, Dan. All right. Next item on the agenda is King Terrace and Kennedy Terrace Housing Complex, informal discussion. Chris Thomas, BSC Group, repaving parking spaces. Your mic's off.
Hi, good evening. Chris Thomas with BSC Group, with the engineers for Millis Housing Authority. This is a state-funded project for parking lot reconstruction at Kennedy and King Terrace. See if I can share my screen. Can you see that?
Yes, thank you.
So these are, these are two developments with the Millis Housing Authority. They are connected developments ordered by Exchange Street and Union Street. The project consists of reconstructing the two existing parking lots on the property, as well as some accessible curb ramps, the meet the parking lot, and Cape Cod berm at the entrances of the two parking lots. The project's also looking to add one additional spot where currently there's an old tree stump. And these are existing parking lots that will be full-depth reconstruction. And we're just, we're looking for some guidance to see if this can be eligible for a waiver for a site plan review.
We don't have our engineer here. The one question I would ask is, like on some of the, we had a redevelopment of, or an addition on to a manufacturing facility, and we didn't require them to put in, you know, drainage chambers and things like that, but we did have them put in a swale to manage some of the water. How do you guys, is there any water management in this right now? Stormwater management?
There's no stormwater management proposed. It's, it's basically just working within the limits of the existing parking lots, with the exception of a possible additional space, just because the, the parking is fairly tight on site as it is. All the drainage currently goes to, is, there's, in Kennedy Terrace, there's two onsite catch basins. And King Terrace goes to one onsite catch basin.
And are those, are those to be left as is?
That's what we're proposing.
So those catch basins just basically go into the ground?
Nope, I believe, I I believe they are dry wells. I would have to confirm that.
Okay. If they are tied into the sewer, you know, sometimes they'll do stuff like put an elephant trunk in it to get any oils and stuff separated out. Can you confirm on that, how those things work?
Yep, yep, I confirm that.
The only other question I'd ask is, not that we want to add cost, but could you guys look at, is there a way to do some sort of stormwater management to this? You know, I would, I would just say explore the possibility without spending a lot of time.
Yeah, we can look into it. Yeah, we're currently at, at our budget for the project.
You guys take coffee breaks, right? You've got something to do while you're drinking your coffee.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about the, the construction budget for the project. It's, it's, it's at the limit for construction budget currently. So adding a, like, adding storm scepters would definitely exceed the construction cost.
And so this is a state-funded project?
Yes.
Okay, so that there's no chance of going back to them and saying, hey, guys, we didn't do any stormwater management here?
We can, I can look into it with them.
I mean, what I would say, what I would say is, or suggest is, you know, is, I got it, we've got a budget, but could, could we at least look at it? And if there's something reasonable or something that we could do to improve it without blowing the budget, I think that would be something that, as a town, our former chairman, he ate, breathed and slept stormwater management, so yeah, I think he would, he would yell at me for not doing my job if we didn't look at this.
Okay.
So like I said, we, we would look for your, your, you know, what you, what you think you could provide at reasonable cost and maybe think, I mean, I would be surprised that the state wouldn't pick it up. I mean, they're pushing us to do the, along with the feds, to improve the stormwater.
Okay.
Beyond that, I, I have no issue rebuilding it. I think it's a great idea. Anyone else on the board have any comments?
Mr. Chairman. I guess I'm a little confused. What are you actually doing here? You're ripping up the asphalt and just putting down new asphalt? Are you rebuilding the, the land underneath it?
Nope, it's a, we're working within the existing parking lots. They're currently, they're in kind of fair to poor condition, settling, cracking. So we're putting back some new gravel burrow base and new asphalt.
So you're, you're taking out the old asphalt and, and obviously reclaiming it and then putting, and then doing the work underneath it and then putting down new asphalt?
Yes, yes, within the limits of the existing parking lots.
Okay, so, so nobody did any kind of, of stormwater, you know, looking into this whole project before this? Because I would, I would think on a new project that you would have to do some sort of storm, stormwater reclamation or what have you, up, up to new standards that are required by the state.
Well, we're, yeah, we're just repaving where the existing parking lots are. We're not trying to add impervious.
Okay. I'll leave, it's back to you, Rich.
No, I, I said, I, I, you know, I think unfortunately this, I, I think in their initial, you know, and from his, what his charge was is to basically repave it. I think in, the state should have probably recognized the fact that, hey, listen, maybe we should think about some stormwater management too. And, you know, that's, he, that's, they're doing what they were asked to do. We're asking, can you guys take a look at, you know, something to improve it and see if that's something that you could do, and if it is, great, and if the state will add that to the tab, even better. And if not, you know, I would assume we just go ahead and pave it as is, but we would, we would strongly suggest that they at least look into doing something there.
Okay.
So will you be able to come back, if we, let's see, we have a special meeting. If you could look into it and, Camille, if they came back, if we had them look at that and they get back to us before the special meeting?
Well, that's next Tuesday. I don't know if that's enough ti, would that be enough time, Chris? Well, our next meeting is November tenth.
Okay, yeah, November tenth would work.
Yeah, if you can look into it, I mean, if you can turn it around, we will look at it and, and we can vote on it then, so it's not really a delay.
All right. The, the next meeting would be next Tuesday?
Well, we're having a special meeting next Tuesday for a bylaw amendment. If you'd have something ready to present in time, I guess that Rick, Rich said that we could squeeze that in, otherwise our next regular meeting is November tenth. Which would you prefer?
Yeah, I guess the, the tenth will be more appropriate.
Okay. All right, so on that, yeah, so this is informal discussion, so if you could get back to us on the tenth, with whatever you come up with, we can give you an approval then.
All right, thank you.
All right, great, thanks very much, appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right, next onto our other business. We have the zoning bylaw subdivision rules and regulation revisions from Ms. Riley. And if you, you could actually share those with us? You're muted too, Nicole. You're muted.
You're a mute, Nicole. There you go.
All right.
There you go.
It moved to, well, it, yeah, it, I don't, this whole screen, screen sharing thing threw me off. Okay, several months ago, we had discussed some potential revisions, both to our subdivision rules and regulations, and to one of the bylaws with regards to parking. So on here, not sure how to, okay, so the, after discussions with both the board initially months, several months ago, and with Melissa, we were trying to come up with some changes that are often requested. Waivers that are requested, look into those most frequent waivers. The first of which was the parking spaces. More often than not, we are requested a wa, have applicants request waivers for, to reduce the parking space from a twenty-one foot length to an eighteen foot length. This is part of the zoning bylaw. So if this is something that the board feels is worth moving forward on, we would need to take a vote on this provision, send it to Board of Selectmen. Obviously, it's not gonna make it on for Fall Town Meeting. So it would probably wait until November, send that, they would review it, present it to them. If they approved it, they would send it back to us for a public hearing. So this is, this change from twenty-one to eighteen feet is what we are often requested in waivers. So that's the zoning bylaw revision for, open for discussion right now.
Sorry, I know I couldn't, I was having the same problem. You were getting the clicker up there. I, I mean, I have no issue with that. If the parking lot is unusable, then people aren't gonna go there. If they want to reduce the parking spaces and people find it inconvenient, you know, that's fine. It does give the owner more flexibility on being able to fit the, the vehicles in, into a smaller space, which, you know, because we're becoming more built out, we have less land, so that opens up some more opportunities to, you know, to develop areas. So, like I said, I, I have no issue with it, and if people find it super inconvenient, they won't go there. So do, what do you want us to do on this, Nicole? Will you make a motion on this?
I think Alan had a question.
I have a question.
Sorry, Alan, I didn't see.
Couple of questions. Yeah, when I first saw this come up, I looked at some of the other towns to see what their definitions are, and eighteen was less than I saw in any of the towns I was able to find information on. I was seeing anywhere from eighteen and a half to twenty feet. And almost every town has a separate requirement for parallel parking spaces, and that's typically twenty-two feet. You know, depending on the layout of a parking lot, you might have your, your normal straight-on parking, but you might have a couple of parallel spaces kitty-coordored in. Eighteen just seems small to me. There's Um, eighteen just seems small to me. There's a number of vehicles well in excess of eighteen feet on the road currently. And while it's one thing to say that people won't go there. You know, if you have an essential service, a doctor's office, whatever, that really people need to go and, and utilize the facility. If the parking is not convenient, that's not something they can say, well, I'm just going to go somewhere else today. You know, I, I don't have a problem in specific cases where someone comes to us and looks for variance. But I don't think we should reduce the requirements across the board.
Okay, I mean, that's a, that's a good point, um, um. A- anyone else in the board have a comment on that?
Yeah, uh, Rich, um, I kind of agree with Alan. Why don't we leave it alone? And then we'll do it on a case by case basis, depending on what's, you know, if somebody's coming in with a, a new. Um, what do you call it? Say like if, if In-N-Out gets redeveloped, um, that sort of thing, we could do it on a case by case. Um, you know, depending on, with all these new, um, crew cab trucks and Suburbans and that sort of thing. They do need the twenty-one feet in length. Uh, I mean, something like where Cravings is, it's, that was always difficult, but they were already established. And that parking lot in the back is already established and I don't even remember what we had back there. I think we, we did a waiver back there for eighteen feet. So we gave, we gave, because we've got two hundred and fifty parking spaces back there. So I, maybe we just leave it alone unless we get a lot of, um, interest, you know. In, in a new subdivision, not subdivision, but, but, but a, a new location. Cause this is more, uh, related to commercial than it is homeowners type of thing. So you're not going to see it in the subdivision. So, you know, we're, we're trying to, I, I don't know. I'd say just leave it alone.
Okay, that's. Um, wait a minute, let's see here. No, uh, great points. Um, I, I have a long truck too, so I mean, I, I understand what you're saying. Uh, it's, there are tough areas. Um, I do want to ask, uh, one of our, our professionals, Dan. What is your take on this? Just for you.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Yeah, I, I would suggest to you that you should change it. Um. So an eighteen foot depth is a, is a pretty standard parking space depth. But you do see some towns who have kind of varying requirements and they, they will play with the figures. Depending on how long, how wide the access aisle is. Um, I do think that nine by twenty-one is, um, excessively deep. It's not something that is needed. And you know, in this day and age, when we're trying to move towards low impact development and reducing impervious coverage. I just think it's very excessive and you know, really the, the proper recourse for varying from the zoning bylaw. Is a variance from the zoning board, which is challenging for applicants to undertake. So if you're not comfortable with the nine by eighteen, I would suggest maybe that you move to, um, something a little different. But not the same as the current bylaw, like perhaps nine and a half wide by eighteen. You know, a slightly wider space makes maneuvering in and out a little easier. Or you could go nine by nineteen and you know, these seem like small amounts. But if you're dealing with a significant commercial project and you're talking about an extra two or three feet per parking space. Per parking aisle row, it really adds up and it adds, adds a lot of impervious surfaces that are really just not necessary. So I would urge the board to move forward with an article. Um, and again, if you're not, you know, if you're not comfortable with nine by eighteen, which is probably the smallest you'd want to go. Go with something slightly larger. Go with nine and a half by eighteen or go with nine by nineteen.
Thanks, Dan. Um, you know, that does bring up a good point, um, about the impervious surface. I mean, we are, we are trying to reduce the amount of paving, um, you know. And, uh, Alan, you said you had looked at, um, other towns? Um, give me those numbers of what you said you had looked up before on those.
The smallest I saw was eighteen and a half and I saw up to twenty. And dedicated parallel parking spaces, twenty-two feet in length.
Right. So if we made it a little bigger and, and I see what, what, what Dan was saying is if it's, if it's in. It's in the zoning, they have to go for a zoning variance, which creates another hurdle, um, that they have to go through. If we, um, if we say we modify it to make it, um, you know, it's, you know, just slightly smaller. Um, you know, that's one hurdle they don't have to go through. And, and I understand what you're saying, George, is leave it like it is and let them come to us for a variance. Um, you know, in the, in the effort of trying to, um, you know. Into the, it tried to reduce the amount of paved space. You know, would you be, you know, if we made it a, like Dan said, if we made it a nine and a half by nineteen? So you had more width and, you know, it's a foot longer. You think that would do it or you think just leave it like it is?
Uh, no, I, I, I kind of agree with Dan too. I mean, and that's why it's always nice to have Dan kicking around. Uh, you know, the nine and a half by nineteen, that gives you plenty of space to put most anything in. It also helps if we have a, a driver that can't drive very well. Um.
Don't pick on me.
So, yeah, that would be fine too, you know, and then if, if we do need to modify it, you know, for a particular. Um, location, we can do that. We can do a variance.
So, oh, we could mark that up to, we could mark that up to nine and a half by nineteen?
Absolutely. I did just want to point out that, um, simply by looking at other towns bylaws. If another town were doing this and they were looking to our, our bylaw, they're going to see a much larger area. But that doesn't provide any indications, as Dan can attest, how many times has he come before us? And seeking a waiver, seeking variances on this nine by twenty-one, I mean, that's something that we hear a lot of. And so that also, to know how other towns are doing, it would have to be able to determine their variances. And how often are their, um, applicants coming in for variance? The nine by eighteen was simply, the, that was the dimensions that Melissa had provided to. You and I and, and an email back in July. So that's where that starting figure came was from our engineer.
Okay.
But no, I agree if, if there's a question, you know. It's just that the nine by twenty-one, as we've seen over and over, applicants are looking, that seems to be excessive. And that was both something Dan and Melissa had brought forward. So, um, this is just a first draft revision between, um. The things that we had come up with, with Melissa and her recommendations, so.
All right, so let's make it, let's make it. Nine and a half by nineteen, we'll put that in there and then when we bring it up to, uh, you know. Do we want to vote on that now or do we want to get them all compiled together and run through them?
Well, this is the only one that needs to be voted upon. Go to, to, um, Board of Selectmen and then back to us for a public hearing. This, and then forward to town meeting, because this is a bylaw. The remainder, the, the next three are subdivision rule and regulations. Those are something that this board can simply vote upon and make that as a change. That's not something that we need, that needs to go to, um.
Just to inter, I'm sorry to interrupt Nicole, subdivision rules and regs, any revisions, they just require a public hearing, advertisement and public hearing. But it doesn't require town meeting approval.
So I would think procedurally, we would want to vote on the zoning bylaws separately and then go through the rules and regs.
Alan, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, um, I love a wide parking space, but if we're concerned with square footage. Nine and a half by nineteen is larger than nine by twenty, by half a square foot.
So nine by nineteen?
Or nine by twenty?
I like the little extra width because it's tough to get out of the car.
Yeah, and I like people not banging their doors into my cars.
Yeah, that's.
Well, the other thing you could do is go nine by eighteen and a half or something like that. You know, depth is not, the extra width helps in the ability to maneuver in and out. Uh, and also opening doors, like you say. Um, the extra depth, you know, a lot of cars in a lot of parking lots can overhang the curb line. You know, so the extra depth of pavement is not super critical a lot of times. It's that extra, that little bit of extra width is, is kind of nice to have.
All right, so nine and a half by eighteen and a half?
Something like that.
I think Alan is right. Alan is right. Go with Alan.
Okay, hold on, and I'm trying to get up, George.
Um, you know, I'm, I'll go along with most anything as long as it's going to work. And then we can do, if we have to do a, a, a variance for a particular project, that's fine too. So nine and a half by, I guess nine and a half by nineteen is fine with me. This is plenty of room and plenty of length and, you know, if, if Dan thinks that's going to work, that's fine too. You know, he does these things all the time, so.
All right, nine and a half by eighteen and a half? Can I sell you on that?
All right, doesn't matter to me.
Okay, let's try that. Alan?
Yeah, that's fine.
Vota?
What are we, nine and a half by, by what?
Eighteen and a half.
Eighteen and a half? Okay, hold on, I just want to, um, just want to calculate the. All right, so that would change the square footage to one seventy-five point seventy-five, so. Do we, Dan, do I round that up to one seventy-six or does that throw it off?
Yeah, round it up to one seventy-six, that's fine.
All right, um, so, uh, do you want to make a motion, Nicole, since it's your baby?
It's not my baby. You throw these things at me and tell me to do them. I'd like to make a motion that we recommend, um. Amending the section two definition parking space, um, of the zoning bylaw. To read. An off-street space at least nine point five feet in width and eighteen and a half feet in length. Not having an area, having an area not less than a hundred and seventy-six square feet. That we re- we recommend this amendment to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. All right, the motion's been made and seconded. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you.
And just to clarify, this is for Springtown meeting, correct?
Yes, yeah, there, there's no, there's no rush in trying to get this in the fall. I don't, I think if we tried to get it on the fall, the.
We couldn't, it's too late.
Board of Selectmen may have a coronary.
I think it's too late with advertising requirements and everything else is too late.
Yeah.
Mister Chairman.
Yes, go ahead, Dan, sorry.
Since you have a little bit of time, um, the board might want to consider, uh, adding some language to that particular posed article. Giving the planning board the special permit rights to authorize. Up to a certain percentage of parking spaces to be compact parking spaces. This is something that's very common in zoning bylaws, where a planning board by a special permit can allow. Up to say twenty-five or thirty percent of the parking spaces in, in, in any given parking lot to be compact spaces. And those are obviously intended for small cars and there are a lot of small cars out there. And you know, it's common that that would be something like a seventeen by eight and a half. You know, and you'd take, you'd take a row of parking spaces and you'd tag them as compact spaces. And you, you'd put up signage indicating that this compact parking lot. But it goes again to the whole concept of reducing impervious coverage and, um, you know, low impact development. Not everybody drives a big, uh, super duty truck like you and I. A lot of people drive smaller vehicles. So like, it's just something to throw out there. You have some time before Springtown meeting. This is something you could put together in the next meeting or two and still be ready for Springtown.
Okay, no, that's a, like I said, if we, I'm fine, we should try to update our, our regs to keep them current. So that sounds like something we should consider.
Uh, Mister, Mister Chairman, uh, and, and I don't know if Dan knows this, but I do know in Medfield, the front of the CBS has. Probably five compact parking spaces. I have no idea what size they are. I don't know if Dan would know that. Uh, maybe I can go by with a tape measure sometime and measure them.
I could check, I don't know off the top of my head what they are, but you know, again, very commonly. It's a reduction of about a foot in depth and, and a half a foot in width. Um, you know, with all the EV cars that are coming out, some of these cars are really tiny. Um, and you can, you know, you can tag a nice little row of compact spaces in, in any parking lot. And it works out pretty well. Some bylaws also have, uh, provisions for motorcycle parking spaces, which are even smaller, you know, by special permit.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great idea and I will for the hell of it, next time I'm over at CBS in Medfield, I'll physically measure them and see what they are.
Very great.
Excuse me, may I interrupt and just maybe make a suggestion that you hold off on making any recommendations just yet to the select board? Just in case there are other items that you want to tweak and add? Okay, very good. So we can just.
Camille, do you need me to make us a second motion to revise?
You can just rescind that if you'd like, just rescind that motion and I can just document that. So we don't send a memo to the select board just yet. We hold off till we have some more finalization and anything else that you might want to add.
Right. Um, Mister Chair, I will do some more checking on this and, um, have it hopefully for the, uh, November meeting.
So you make a motion to rescind the initial.
I'll make a motion to rescind my original motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, great.
Okay, um, the next three items were rules and regulation revisions. Um, the first has to do with, um, utility installations. Specifically, the, um, water and sewer. Um, currently, according to the, with, um. Tables that are indicate that it's, um, sewer lines have to be seven feet deep. Which you can see in the red is the notes from Melissa. That seven feet is somewhat arbitrary, but the point is to make sure that the sewer is below other utilities, mainly water. And deep enough for drain basement fixtures. Um. She is actually recommending that we leave this regulation at seven feet. And then look at items on a case by case basis if waivers are requested. Um, the town sewer construction guidelines do not specify a depth, but do recommend that sewers does, designed. With a depth of cover of four feet or less may be required to be constructed of class fifty-two ductile iron pipe. If under a traveled way. She's referenced, um, the sewer guidelines, which I tried to look over. And you really do not want the attorney looking those over and then somebody needs to be looking at them that knows what the heck they mean. So I would defer that to any of you. Um, however, as it says, you can see in bold, she has said that she believes that, said. It's better to leave that regulation at seven feet and look at things at a case by case basis if waivers are requested. But she did add, um, if we wanted to remove the minimum buried depth requirements. Then we could consider adding the horizontal and vertical separation requirements in its place.
Okay, um, well, I mean, one of the reasons why they wanted to, um. If you don't have to dig down seven feet to put pipes in, it saves on, uh, installation costs. Um, and in general, they don't necessarily have to go, uh, seven feet. Um, you know, so it's, we can leave it at seven feet. I think that was a, uh, something that had been brought up, uh, by, um, one of the, uh, engineers. Um, I think it might have been the Dan. Um, but actually, so the one question I would go back to is since you're here, Dan, could you walk through what your thought process is on? Um, changing the depth of the sewer, if, what the plus would be on that?
Sure, it's, it's, so seven feet is kind of an ideal situation. Your water mains are installed at five feet. And the preference is that sewer service laterals run under the water mains. And also the preference is that there's a, an ability to be able to drain. And also the preference is that there's a, an ability to be able to drain sewage from people's basement levels if they install rooms in their basement levels. However, you know, we have a lot of existing sewer systems in town and topography constrains what we can do with new developments. So, you know, you get into a circumstance a lot of times where you can provide gravity sewer to homes, you know, by running the main sewer at, say, as shallow as four feet deep. And gravity sewer is much more preferable for individual homes because you don't need a pump. You know, so if you, if you stick tight to the seven-foot depth, what you do is you force a lot of future homes to have to pump their sewage into a gravity main. And a lot of times, there are other design alternatives, like instead of making the sewer seven feet deep, you can make the water seven feet deep. And you can run the sewer services over on top of the water as long as there's eighteen inches of separation, as Nicole mentioned. So I, I'm not sure that you need to necessarily change your regulation on this topic. I think you can deal with it on a case-by-case basis, um, with waiver requests. But I do think that a lot of times, you know, clearly, the preference is to go with gravity sewer as much as you reasonably can. Because, you know, water flows downhill, it's idiot-proof. It's a lot easier than dealing with pumps and things like that. So that's the thought on that topic.
Okay, all right, well, I agree with you on, you know, gravity's the way to go all the time. So. Um, so I think, you know, in my mind, um, I think we leave it as is and do it a case-by-case. Um. So, all right, why don't we go through the rest of them, Nicole, and we could circle back just because, uh, I'm going to need to go to bed sometime soon.
Um, the next one has to do with, uh, detention drainage design, detention basins, and detention basin with recharge systems. Um, requiring a slope two percent minimum in the bottom of a detention basin and a low-flow channel. If you, um, what's in black here on this first, this top paragraph is what we currently have in the regulations. The red highlighted, um, I tell, is what, um, is being recommended by Melissa for addition to this currently. Um, and that the, what we currently have really has to do more with dry detention basins. So by, by distinguishing that, by adding the, this first phrase for extended dry detention basins, and then adding an additional sentence that distinguishes that, um, from infiltration basement basins, or shall, the floor shall be as flat as possible to provide uniform ponding and exfiltration for runoff.
Okay, and this was one that they, we get asked for all the time to straighten that out. So, um, I think I'm fine with that. We had, we had talked about that before. Um, and, uh, just to go back to Dan, not that it's Dan's night, but Dan, this is one of the ones that you would, you had talked about. We, you asked for that waiver all the time on this, right?
Yeah, you, you have to make this change because the way that, the way the reg is written, it's completely uh, opposite of the way we design infiltration basins. And almost every basin these days is infiltration. Nobody designs a dry infiltration, a dry detention basin. So, yeah, I would strongly urge you to make this change.
Okay, all right. Um, and so on this one, so Nicole, uh, on this, we should make notes so we remember what we talked about. So on this one, we, I think we should go, uh, and when we go back to vote on it, that, um, this makes sense to make a change on. All right, and then the next one is, oh, changing to plastic?
Um, yeah, requiring four and a half feet. Bring that down. Um. So in this, what is, what it, the first red sentence is what we currently have in the regulation, all lateral drain pipe between catch basin and manhole shall be, shall have a minimum of two and a half feet to cover the top of the pipe. All mainline drain pipes between manholes shall have a minimum of four and a half feet to cover. The below in what is red italicized is what Melissa has. Um, this was her suggested language, all drain, to replace the above red, all drain pipes shall have a minimum of three feet of cover. Less cover is acceptable where reinforced concrete four or five pipe is proposed according to design manufacturer specifications. Design pipe located entirely outside of the street right of way may be high-density, um, polyethylene pipe.
Yeah, so when that's, that's a standard, um, there, there, everyone's, they're switching over to the, uh, the HDP pipe. Um, so basically, that's just bringing our code up to, our, our regulation up to local or, uh, current construction practices. So that makes sense to me. Um, and anything underneath the pavement goes to concrete, so. Um, okay, great. And Dan, you're here? Any, uh, anything that you would, um, add on that, or that's, we asked, usually you ask for that anyhow.
Well, I would, I would urge you to, um, discuss this particular revision with DPW a little bit.
Okay.
The, uh, reinforced concrete pipe is an old-school approach. HDPE pipe is the way of the future. Um, I don't know, you know, if, if DPW goes out and fixes a drain line today, do they actually replace it with reinforced concrete pipe? I kind of doubt it. I think they probably replace it with HDPE. So I agree with all the language about the depth of cover. That all makes sense. HDPE pipe only needs one foot of cover to withstand truck traffic. But I would urge you to consider changing this language to allow HDPE pipe under the street. Because, you know, and that, that is really the only, I, I will tell you this, the only time we specify reinforced concrete pipe is in subdivision roads. Every other project I design, drainage piping is HDPE. And, you know, towns and municipalities are, you know, they're always a little, a little behind on catching up to modern practices. But, you know, I would ask Jim McKay, what is your view on this? If you haven't already, I don't know, maybe you have, but, um, you know, in the future, reinforced concrete pipe is going to be a rarity. It really is. You know, HDPE is plastic, it lasts forever and ever and ever, and it has a long shelf life, just as long as reinforced concrete pipe. And it's so much easier to install both for the town, you know, in the future, because every road that we design in a subdivision is ultimately, uh, taken over by the town. It has to be maintained by the town. And for everybody else, it's, it's, uh, it's easier on labor, it's easier on install, and it lasts just as long.
Okay, no, thanks for that. Um, so maybe we should circle back, uh, for Jim, with Jim on this.
And I will, um, I will send, uh, with, if you would like, Mr. Chair, I will send this language and Dan's comments over to Jim and ask him his input.
Nope, that'd be great. Good. No, this is all good stuff. This is, um, good that we picked away at these couple of items. Um, if, um, let's see, my thought is, um, that I think maybe we could tidy up these couple of things here and circle back in the next meeting and then we could vote on it. Um, because I think, uh, if we get those all, you know, into a good package, I think I'd be willing to plus some feedback from Jim. I think I'd be willing to go ahead and vote on that.
Okay. Um, so where do, where do we stand this first one with regards to the seven feet that we're, we're.
Leave it as is.
Going to leave that as is?
Yeah. Do it by case by case.
Sounds good.
All right, great. Thanks for doing this. I appreciate it.
Of course.
Um, all right, um, so next thing is, we have a scheduled meeting for October twentieth, a special meeting re- regarding the proposed MCOD overlay, um, for the twentieth of October. And then our next meeting is on the tenth. Um, let's see, I, we have also the update, uh, I'm going to go through quickly. We have the monthly update of items that are going on in the town. Um, I'm just going to kind of breeze through this, um, Bob Vice was kind enough to put it together for us. Uh, Barbary Homes came through and they, uh, went through that the fact that they're going to try to get that project up and running again um, in the spring of next year. Um, and let's see, uh, I'm trying to think what else. Uh, a couple of these have already been gone through. The gas station has the honeydew donuts in there, um, which we talked about already. Um, the GTE LLC fourteen eighty Main Street Manufacturing Cultification, cultivation, um, facility. The host community agreement has been signed and they were going to be moving forwards toward their permitting. Uh, nine forty-six Main Street, LIP, that's a, uh, was a, uh, affordable housing. The developer has withdrawn his request from the zoning board. It is no longer engaged in this property. Uh, ZDA is to officially close out the project. Um, one fourteen Union Street, which is the, uh, Herman Schu Building. Um, this project is scheduled for a public hearing at October twenty-first, uh, the meeting of the zoning board. So that was the forty B project at the Herman Schu factory. Um, Cottage Ave, nothing, um, let's see, In and Hope Store was closed. And, let's see here. Um, thirteen forty-four Main Street, twenty-five units of single-family duplexes and townhouses for homeownership, five units to be affordable, located in IP two zone, being negotiated with select board uncle, under local initiative program. Um, so that would be, um, thirteen forty-four, that's down, where's that, George? Thirteen forty-four, that's down there, Collit?
I think so, yeah. It, it's down there, uh, the Black Cow.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, it's, it's, I think it's across from the tractor sales.
Okay, oh, okay, that piece of property up there.
Way up, the long driveway that goes way up, uh, the top of it.
An existing single-family home right across the street from Tractor Supply.
Okay, all right, great. All right, thank you. Um, let's see, um, McDonald's, uh, they, they went back, um, and asked for an extension. And then, um, let's see here. The, uh, Town Center Planning Initiative, the town is applying to the Mass Development for Real Estate Technical Assistance Grant. The request is for assistance in creating a planning process for the town center. The study area lies within Auburn Road, Curve, Union and Main Streets. The application is under review by the Mass Development for a decision later in the fall. And, uh, Bob, I'm sure you were a part of that. Nope.
Mr. Chair, he wasn't part of it, he was all of it.
Okay, so there we go.
And I don't think he would have told you that, so.
Okay, well then, so thank you, Bob, for doing that. Uh, Bigelow Farm Solar, um, they, uh, Bob reached out to them as the energy director and, uh, is, we're looking into getting some, uh, more information on the solar overlay district, on the, um, some of the large parcels of land in agricultural, because there's some advantages of, uh, being able to use that space. And it'll basically, it can help out the, um, farmers and also, um, it gets solar into an area where, as long as there's enough space around it. So we'll, they'll be working on that and bringing that forward so that we can look at that later on. Um, so that, that's the update. Um, we had meeting notes from, I have to look at the date. I don't know if I printed those.
September fifteenth.
Okay, um, so I read the notes from September fifteenth and they were spectacular as usual. I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from, um, the previous meeting.
Okay.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Okay, um, correspondence and bills?
Nothing of note, nothing of note. We've taken care of everything.
Okay, great. Um, so unless anyone has anything else, um, I make a motion to adjourn. All right, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, great. Well, thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate it.
See you all next week.
See you next week.